And this village board meeting here tonight was contentious, but it was calm and largely focused on frustrations over things like the village taxes and finances. But that devolved very quickly toward the end of the night when activist Jedidiah Brown again returned to the podium and confronted Dalton trustee Andrew Holmes over sexual assault allegations. Brown started yelling and demanding personal answers from Holmes about the sexual accusations before he launched toward the front of the room and appeared to try and swing at Andrew Holmes. Brown was immediately surrounded by police and taken away. Trustee Andrew Holmes, who is also a well-known victims advocate, is accused of sexually assaulting a former Dalton employee during a village-funded trip to Las Vegas last year. Holmes has not been charged with any crime, though the allegations are currently under criminal investigation by Las Vegas Police, and they're also a subject of a civil suit filed by the alleged victim. Now, before any of this happened, the meeting, as we mentioned, was contentious. People wanted to know things about their taxes, where that money is going. Mayor Tiffany Henyard defended her work and pointed the finger at Dalton trustee.
Dalton's frontline responders arrived at village hall in uniform more than a dozen deep to demand answers.
That we've been serving the village without a contract for five years. Currently, the village still refuses to negotiate, making progress extremely difficult and if not impossible.
The South suburban firefighters say their financial situation is far worse than even they know.
So my question is, do we have workman's comp insurance? We will continue to serve despite the fact our health insurance is not being paid, our retirement funds are being taken from us, and workers' compensation claims are not being handled properly.
The revelation was a plea, but as part of the public comment, the firefighters left without immediate answers. Their frustration was the most glaring, but far from the only one from residents who've lost patience with a legally embattled Mayor Tiffany Henyard.
I need to know what's going on with the money in the village of Dalton.
In her monthly mayoral update, shunned by residents who visibly ignored her.
I am literally the beacon of light for Dalton.
Mayor Henyard fired back at her detractors.
The board of trustees raise their proper taxes every single year. I showed you that, showed you proof.
Henyard's handling of village finances is one piece at the center of a wide-ranging investigation happening out of sight by former Chicago Mayor Lori Lightfoot.
Let her speak! Let her speak!
After Henyard barred her from speaking at Dalton's meeting last month, Lightfoot released a statement revealing the scope of her findings so far, read aloud by one of the trustees who hired her.
A picture is emerging of the village's finances and overall how the village form, how the village form of government does or does not comply with state law.
Lightfoot's statement also says that she has experienced what she called predictable roadblocks, and she says she's been stonewalled by Mayor Henyard and some of the village employees. Lightfoot is currently operating under a $30,000 budget, which she said she is still under. She says she will continue to work until she can get those answers the village people want.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Today, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. Today is July 1st, 2024, and the time is? Six what? 6:51 PM. Please call the row. All right. Next, we have public comment, and it is three minutes. Everybody, just so you're aware, we have ordinances that say you cannot disrupt the meeting. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be removed from our meeting. So if everybody will please stay in order and be respectful of each other. Whether you like what someone's saying or not, please keep your comments to yourself so they can get through their three minutes. And then also, I'll see the Board of Trustees have swipe fees, trustee voucher. And Norwood, is it a reason you guys switch seats?
Do we have to be a reason?
I'm just asking the question. Everything, I'll be so hostile. Is there a reason you guys switch seats?
Nope.
All right. It seems as though you want to go first because you got to keep up with the votes. I think Brittany probably just couldn't keep up with them. But okay. All right, three minutes. Here we go. Who you got for first?
First of all, I'd like for everyone that would please, and I'll give my, yield my three minutes to it, let's give our firefighters a standing applause. And for my residents, again, I'm not going to address the dais. I'm going to address my residents. We all know how it goes. We put on a shit show, and that's the word for it, at Thornton Township, because we argue amongst ourselves. The media's here. If we're going to give them something, we're going to give them a good show. Let's be calm, let's be cool, let's not give anybody a reason to disrupt this meeting, to call it. The only way we're going to get what we want and get to the point of anything is that we hold to it. This is our fight.
All right, who's next?
Good evening, residents and trustees. I stand here, this is my first time actually attending a meeting, and I'm a little thrown aback because I received my tax bill. My tax bill is three times what it was last installment. My alleys are messed up. I have garbage all over the place. I have a couple of abandoned houses on my block. My property value is down because of the fact of this. But my property taxes go up three times? I'm not accepting that. I need to know what's going on. Why can't Dalton Ellis get proper road repair? Or houses being repaired? You say you did all of this. You have not done anything, nothing for, I don't know what even side that is, but the Dalton, the Dobson Ellis Avenue. It's horrible over there. Trees are down, everything. But you say you beautify the village? No. And my property taxes go up? I pay for this. I've been here for 30 years. This is the worst I've ever seen this village.
Good evening. My name is Adam Farre. I'm the president of Dalton Fire Local 3766. I'm here today with fellow members of 3766 looking for answers. Since January of 2020, the village has chose not to settle a contract and refused to bargain with us. They have ignored all requests to reach an agreement and resolve the current situation going on within the fire department. After endorsing Mayor Henyard in 2021, she proceeded to replace our full-time deputy chief with a part-time deputy chief, who contributed to her campaign fund. This was, this is where the problems began. Local 3766 filed and won the grievance on a clear violation of our contract. What followed was a dysfunctional negotiation process, which led us, which leads us to inform the residents that we've been serving the village without a contract for five years. Currently, the village still refuses to negotiate, making progress extremely difficult and if not impossible. The second issue is our 457 accounts, which have been in litigation since 2022. This account is set up for individuals to invest their own money into a retirement fund. The money is withdrawn from the members' paychecks and is supposed to be sent to Nationwide. The village does not follow these steps and has no accountability of where the money is or if they've spent it. Once this was discovered, the administration was informed via email by the previous union president that these missing deposits can be considered theft of wages. They replay, they reacted by placing him on administrative leave for inappropriate emails. To this date, we are still nine to 10 deposits short. This shows lack of accountability and is an act of gross negligence. The third issue, health insurance. Health insurance is covered under the collective bargaining agreement, Article 14. The members of the fire department have run into several problems with our premiums not being met. This has led members and families' claims being denied, but also being sent to collections. This has been brought up to the village numerous times. All requests to date have been ignored. Agreements was filed and escalated to step four. The fourth issue is our union dues. Per our collective bargaining agreement, Article 3, dues checks, the village is responsible for contributing union dues. We were missing 11 checks since 2023. $12,610. We received three unspecified checks. This can also be looked at as theft of wages. Keith Freeman's response to the step-three process was, "This is an issue on the trustees that they do not vote for the bills at, from the warrant list at the board meetings." The newest issue is work comp. In the past, we've had multiple issues with work comp to where members have been hurt on the line of duty and their claims have not been filed properly, which led to multiple members being sent to collections. I know that the police, the police department is dealing with similar issues. So my question is, do we have workman's comp insurance? The Dalton Fire Department is here to serve and protect the residents of the village of Dalton, and we do this with pride. We will continue to serve despite the fact our health insurance is not being paid, our retirement funds are being taken from us, and workers' compensation claims are not being handled properly. These are serious issues, and they need to be addressed and fixed immediately.
All right. Call the next person. Call the next person.
Next person to the mic, please.
I rolled it out. Didn't even get up yet. Oh, okay. I thought she started it. All right, so I'm being calm today. Just wanted to address first the trustees and just thank you guys for the wonderful job you're doing. Mine is Stan and Andrew. Andrew, I don't even know why you're here. Stan, did you step down from the township yet? Because that's what you said you was going to do the last meeting. All right, so it's just ridiculous that we have a corrupt mayor and somebody that's just so evil and that just don't care about the residents. All of us hardworking, educated residents, and we have this to deal with. This is a shame. This is a sham. The fire department, they just came strong. Do we even have a benefits specialist for the village of Dalton? Like, that should be like the person that should be answering these questions is actually the benefits specialist for Dalton. I'm going to go a little bit off topic, but I feel bad for them because they're not getting what they're supposed to get, and we have HR. HR should be in charge of benefits. Why is that not being paid?
Because it happens June 13 at 1:00 AM.
Three minutes are up.
Oh, thank you. Because you want me to stop talking about a murder that you won't talk about?
Three minutes are up. Who's next?
Respectful now.
Good evening, most everyone. Let me start. I've had an epiphany, and I wanted to apologize for a comment I made at the Thornton Township meeting that there was no disrespect to her daughter intended. However, I understand things can be misconstrued, misinterpreted. So I wanted to just set the record straight. It was a total compliment. It wasn't a diss. But I do apologize if it was taken that way. Tiffany, I didn't intend for it to be any kind of diss. The diss was directly toward you.
Good evening. I'm the mother of Alexis Wilson, killed by Dalton police, or should I say executed by Dalton police within one minute of their arrival. One minute saw they gave her. 52 seconds, he's punching her with his flashlight in his hands, and four seconds later, she has seven bullets. You and your officers put out a narrative that blamed it on my child. And to this day, I still have people that search me out to tell me that my daughter deserved what she got.
Well, super mayor, I want to know one thing. I've known some super people, okay? And, you know, they were there for me. They gave me what I needed when I was down, when I was hurting. And when this woman's child was shot, why weren't you there for her? Why did you back the person that shot my, my great niece? I can't believe this world is coming to this.
They are beyond foul. What they did with Alexis Wilson is just one, one of them. It's huge. Don't get me wrong. But there are so many other things that need to be addressed with this administration.
And I know you guys are angry and there's issues to be solved. But check this out. Why don't we all try to work together and solve this? Trustees, mayor, residents, all of us, all that we can do is just work together and try to figure this out. We can't figure this out if we're going to be angry all the time and we got to accuse Tiffany of everything. The FBI is investigating her. Let her be investigated, and we even have to worry about anything. Let's worry about getting together in Dalton as peaceful residents like we always have been. I've been in here over 20 years. Same thing went on with Mayor Rogers. Same thing. It's just got to stop, you guys.
I don't understand why I'm here. I don't understand that, and I don't appreciate that. Your house probably not even in Dalton. So when the fire come and the whole town burned down, you really don't give a damn.
All right, that ends public comment. Next on the agenda is general announcement. Are there any general announcements?
I'll go first.
Any general announcements?
Yes, I said I'll go first. Hello, everyone. Happy Monday. I want to say that I listened to all of the residents speak today. And I know that the goal is to work together, right? I truly believe in the old adage, you want to go fast, you go alone. If you want to go far, you go together. The, the issue is that we have a mayor and administration that thinks this is a dictatorship, and it's not. This is not Russian. We do not have Putin up here. This is a democracy, and that's what I need everyone, the residents, to realize. We have residents that called me and said, hey, I received a $500 grass cutting fine. My job as a trustee is to work for the resident. So when I act, when I hear someone say that and that's a concern, it's my job to make sure that it's added to the agenda so that we can discuss it because a problem for a resident is a problem for all of us. We have, I have a senior who called me and said, hey, I have a pit bull in my backyard. It's been there for days. I want to know if you all have animal control. I take that as a concern. My job is to add it to the agenda so that we can have discussion because we all have questions. These are the, these are the things that we really come here to discuss. Residents and concerns. This is how we have a better community. But yeah, the, the administration don't even put our items on the agenda. And people wonder why we have a hard time working together. Something as simple as trying to add an agenda item so that we could discuss it for the residents. That's insane. Again, I thank you all. If you are having a trunk party, contact me. For all the people that would like to sponsor, contact me, and I love you all. This is, this too shall pass. Thank you. It's a shame that we even had to go through this. If our items was placed on the agenda, we would go through the meeting and continue on and have, go about our way. But because of someone wanting to be a self-servant and not a public servant, these are the things that we are encountering. It's sad, and yes, she said clickbait. It's, it's a shame that probably from now until she go to jail, we'll be looking at camera people in here. We shouldn't be on TV every first Monday about what's going on in the village of Dalton. It's embarrassing. It's very embarrassing. But at the same time, the same person creates all this chaos. Are y'all not going to the Thornton meetings? Y'all see the same thing happening over there, and it's not the same people. So who is the common denominator? Who is the, who is the person that's really creating the chaos? So when people ask, you have absolutely the right to ask about your money because it's your money. You work hard for it, so you have the ability to ask about it. So when people going out of town, when people paying for stuff, when I'm shaking a hand to make a deal and not running it past the appropriate people that's supposed to approve it, then you should ask, and you should hold those people accountable. Have a great day.
All right. Is there anybody else?
Update on the status, and we know the last meeting was less than pleasurable based on, based on the request. So we do have an update, or I have an update email that was received from, from the investigation on former mayor, Mayor Lightfoot. Has emailed a response that I want to read into record, so that way hopefully this will be much more peaceful. So her statement, "We are making consistent progress in addressing the questions the board has asked us to address in its resolution. We have conducted a number of witness interviews, many of which have been very informative and have led to discovery of other relevant evidence. We have reviewed many lawsuits filed. We have reviewed historic village legislative action and, no. And we have issued scores of FOIA requests to the village of Dalton and elsewhere. As a result of this work, a picture is emerging of the village's finances, the way, the way in which it current, the current executive administration operates. Many issues with the police department regarding staffing and operations, and overall how the village, how the village form of government does or does not comply with state law, its own ordinances and longstanding norms regarding the village government. Not surprisingly, there have been obstacles. Chief among them is the, is the village continues to ignore its obligations under FOIA. There is seemingly no identifiable FOIA officer as mandated by state law. Instead, the few communications, if any, are with any anonymous person who refuses to be identified themselves, again, a violation of state law among many issues. This non-compliance with FOIA was expected, and we have a plan to address this and any continuing compliance issues. And while, and while many witnesses have been generous in their willingness to be interviewed, the, the village mayor's failure to cooperate has a chilling effect on the current employees' willingness to speak or otherwise cooperate. We will continue to work to overcome this problem. While we have made consistent progress, more work needs to be done. We have been very efficient to date in the expenses incurred, and by our estimates, we are well under $20,000 to date. As obligated, we will provide a projection of all costs when we get closer to the $30,000 mark. And as always, we will continue to do our work in a manner that minimizes expenses while diligently following the facts." So that is the statement for the update on this report. I will note, one obstacle that was, that had arisen was a request issued by the mayor's office we received to the attorney general seeking to declare the appointment as unconstitutional. And on June 14th, we received the correspondence from the attorney general. Say, well, I'll just read the last couple of lines. "Therefore, the Public Access Bureau concludes the board did not violate OMA by voting, by voting to appoint Mrs. Lightfoot as special investigator on April 8th. This letter serves to close the file, and if you have any further questions, please contact."
All right, that ends general announcement. Next is mayor's report. I know you guys have been waiting on my report, and you know I've been doing amazing things, myself and my staff. We put on a ton of great events for our community, a ton of outreach as it relates to the police outreach program we have. We go door knocking. You see them on bikes, yes.
For our community, a ton of outreach.
I know you guys asked one of the police officers, uh, he was riding on a bike, and you said, hey, did they take your car? And he said, no, man, we just riding on the bike. So it engaged conversation, which that's what it was intended to do. Make sure you guys stay prayed up. Make sure y'all love on each other. Life is so short. You don't want to regret a moment of your life by being bitter, by being hostile. Just allow people to get in your positivity as your space. At the end of the day, you go home to your loved ones. Them the ones that care about you, them the ones that uplift you, them the ones that will always bring you through a storm. Don't connect with messy people because misery needs company, and that's what we tend to forget. When people look at us, and especially our residents, you guys are our seniors. So when we look at you as, as the youth, we look at what will we look forward to? You have to be the example. You cannot just be a person that's keeping up KI. We would never follow a KI. I hate when trustees sit up here and say that, I don't know why we have metal. Everybody know why we have it. If you pay attention to the crowd, like one young lady got up and said at the podium that everybody is hostile, people are disrespectful, people say all kinds of things in that crowd. I don't sit down there, but I do hear about it. So all I'm saying to you guys is you have to be respectful amongst each other. It's been plenty of times where you all have gotten into it with each other. And it's sad because it's like nobody wants to respect anyone's feelings. Unfortunately, through the media, which I call fake news, they only show one negative false narrative. It's no facts, no truth tool. People get to the podium and just lie. And it is no true, but then the news will play the lie on the news. And it's sad because little do they know they're putting people in jeopardy, whether it's board members, whether it's our staff. People do tend to lash out at people that they see. That's another reason why village hall was closed down, because people will come in and harass our staff. But no one asks the right questions. You just assume what someone is doing or go with a negative narrative. So I want people to find their heart to figure that out and understand why we're doing what we're doing. Something else I want to address, people cannot get inside our village hall due to the fact you got people coming from all over that don't live in our town. People don't live in Dalton, but yet this room is full, and it's not even full of our Dalton residents. People just stood up there and said they was from Washington DC. Come on now. Don't live in the state of Illinois for that matter, the township, nor do they live in the village of Dalton. Also, you have people that make comments. I know at one of our previous meetings that don't live here, they live in a whole nother city, but come to Dalton and say that they live in our town, and they do not. Again, no one fact checks. People just sit there and say whatever it is, and that's not fair, and that's not right, or it's not accurate. So I just wish people would lead with truth and stop just with mess and chaos. And to my youth, never, never, ever give up. It's going to always be someone that's going to doubt you, come for you, attack you, and not want you to grow. It's part of the process. But at the end of the day, remember, if it's no test, how you, how would you ever have a testimony? So make sure you continue to grow throughout the controversy. And don't worry about the noise and what anybody got to say about you because at the end of the day, I keep telling you, you go home to your loved ones. All these, these people here, all these, you see what they did? This going up? They're just catty. That ain't nothing else but mess. Just keep going. Don't give up. If you look at all the greats before me, whether it's the Malcolm X's, whether it's the different people, you will see the growth in them. You will see that they all went through controversy, but they was the baddest leader.
I might be quiet, bring it down.
They were the great leader. And I just want you too to know that you could be a great leader as well. It's amazing to me that I grew here, as I always say, they flew here. And what I mean by that is I grew up in this school district from Burger Vandenberg to Thorn Ridge, and it amazes me that people don't utilize the people that's here. I am literally the beacon of light for Dalton. I am the one that has made it. I am the one that actually grew up in this town and actually came and governed where I live at because I care so much about where I'm at. If you think about all the hatred and all the negativity, I told you guys, I only make what, about $50,000? $50,000 for all this scrutiny that you guys put me under. I make 50K. So that means somebody really got to love what they do for a living. I love what I do, and I want to see Dalton grow. And I think we've been doing an awesome job, and I love the fact that my staff has been on the ground, taking care of the business, from getting streets repaved, getting alleys repaved, getting sidewalks done. Back in the day, like I said before, I get a speech all the time. We used to do 50/50, where the resident had to pay 50% and the village paid the other 50%. And they say, why would you guys have to pay 50% for something you don't own? That's a public way. But these are the things that I changed when I became the mayor. Wish that people would allow me to lead and stop trying to tell me what to do. I'm the leader. I am not in their seats any longer. I was in their seats for eight years. I win every single term that I run for, every single term. The last seat, which is the mayor's seat that I just won by 82%, I will win my next term.
All right.
And just stay tuned to that because this little crowd that comes here and try to keep up mess and kick up dust for clickbait, for the news, or for just to get a moment and say, hey, girl, I was on the news. That, that's so, so beneath us. You have to grow, guys, and you have to show people that you are growing and that we should be looking to you for direction. We can't look to you for direction because you're so. My look bad, we look bad. So you can try to make whoever look bad all you want, but my community really do love me and appreciate the things that I have out to our town. And I'mma keep on growing our village despite the controversy. I have not given up. I'm not going to give up, and I'm not going to quit. So you can stop with all that because I'm keep going. I'mma keep going, and I'mma keep pushing because things would not have gotten done or continue to keep, keep getting done if I quit or listen to hate, haters. I just don't. You guys are my motivators, so I thank you for putting me on tables and in rooms that I never would have been in. I appreciate that love. For those that keep saying people going to jail, y'all gonna see who's going to be going to jail from this board. So stay tuned because what you think is good for me is damn sure good for you. So thank you so much for listening. We're going to play the video now so that you can see what we just did with JB Gate. Let's go. So this is our outdoor skating rink. Everybody seems to hate on what's coming.
Right now, wait. We got to leave, go ahead and leave.
Your JB skating rink?
I wanted to start it. We can all come out, three, four, $5,000, $1,000.
The JB skating rink, um, you see it's a maze. You see that view?
From the inside.
And we went through the town and community came out. When I say they came out, they came out in drums. They literally was out on, um, the porch and they had a blast. Yep, go ahead, play the video. So again, if you guys wanna ride bikes or do something, just make sure you come out. Here and see a different narrative of what's going on in our village. And that's what we showcase here at the board meetings. Um, when you come here during the mayor's report, we always give you a different perspective, whether you want to hear it or not. Uh, I thank y'all for standing. Um, I appreciate it. And I thank you for paying attention to me during my report. Uh, stay tuned because we got a lot of great things to come. And that will end my report. I only had two videos. Uh, thank, thank God for you guys, right? Uh, next time I'll make sure I have five. Yep. All right, that is my report. Uh, next is village clerk's report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as the board stated, their items are not being put on the agenda as well as my minutes. So unfortunately, I don't have a report because our things are not placed on the regular board of trustees meeting and that's why it's so important to hold special meetings. Thank you.
All right, it's been Marsha Sack. Any discussion?
Yes, go ahead. Um, that was a great point you asked. We want to know what this payment is for because it says lease payment number 16, but reviewing all of the, uh, warrant lists all the way back to May of 2021, this is the first time this company has ever been on the warrant list. So we want to know what it is.
Okay, so if you wanted to know what it is, y'all know the protocol. Why did y'all ask questions? If it relate to, uh, getting answered before we get to the board meeting. Once again, we do all this for show. Got all your answers before. You said that you talked to the village administrator last time and he answered your question.
Absolutely. And when I called him.
Hold on, I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm not done. So he asks, you asked the questions and he answered. So you could have did the same thing prior to this meeting and started here. We go grant standing. Once again, if you're not gonna pay it, you're not gonna pay it. If you wanted to answer about it prior to the meeting, y'all could have did the same thing. So we're gonna move on. Um, call the.
Cause when I looked at the meeting, it said based on, we were gonna be turning in vehicles for the lease, for the fleets. None of the, heard the, uh, guy Christopher Frye, who emailed me back, said that none of the vehicles was turned in. So if we didn't turn in any vehicles and we purchased 28 new vehicles, because that's what the exact total is, 28 new vehicles, where are those old vehicles?
So why don't you think we have old vehicles?
You said what?
I said, why you don't think we have old vehicles?
Oh, I'm so glad you asked me that. I was asking a question, but the reason I'm asking that is because by historically, if you're selling anything, it should go through the board. Because in 2021, you put that you were selling some stuff in the basement and you bought it in front of us and said, this stuff is a surplus, you know, that we have to go in front of the body to sell stuff. But y'all been selling these cars on govdeal.org and it hasn't came across the board.
First of all, we didn't sell anything from out of the.
A lie. I got it. Her name is Molly.
Sell anything from out of the basement. And when you guys said you did not want to clean. Hold on, you did. When you guys said you did not want to clean village hall, that's right when I got in office. All that trash, all that trunk, whether it was couches, furniture is still down there now. So we did not. As relates to vehicles, as relates to vehicles, that would be Keith Freeman question because he the one, the vehicles, as you know this already, but no, 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 but you know all this already. So when we get to the, hold on. So when we get to the board meeting, I don't understand why we.
So let me say this because I think that for one, you never addressed the fact that it was supposed to go through the board. However, you just wanted to spend it. Two, I did speak to Keith Freeman. Keith, when I called you, I called you about what?
That's a, I think that's a.
When I called you, what did I call you about?
Stop, 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 stop. Before you start with the whole stuttering thing, just relax. Everybody relax.
I know. When you have a million dollars in leases that we did not approve, the issue is that we cannot afford it. Let's take the Thai hoes back with all of that interest and pay the firefighters what is due to them moving forward. There are other ways to spend this money. We're not prioritizing. Everything is a party. There's nothing to celebrate when you have employees that are not being taken care of the right way, when they're not being compensated properly. So again, these things are not being brought in front of the board. And what happens is we're going broke and we continue to say this, we continue to say this. And this is a big issue. So again, I'm gonna say there's a lack of transparency. We know that there's a lot of things that's going on that we don't even know about, such as with the credit card statements, they continue to refuse to give us those. They increased that credit card limit from 20,000 a month to 50,000 a month. And every month it's replenishing and things are being spent every month. And of course, it's unbannounced to the board. So again, residents, these are issues. These is, uh, these are the reasons why you see us have this back and forth. Because you all need to know how the money is being spent. You, we, I heard her make a comment regarding taxes. It's unbelievable to me that you sit here and tell a resident that we're the reason why their taxes are increasing when we all know that you don't follow a budget. So common sense tells us all, anybody who have a household, that when you don't follow a budget, you cause a deficit. Any money that's not approved for, so that million dollar skating rink that wasn't approved for, guess what? The taxpayers have to pay for it somehow. So whether the board approved it or not, we are all still paying for it because again, with a deficit, anytime there's overspending, that difference is on the backs of the taxpayers. So despite the things that are going on in the south suburbs in general, you have a leader who continues to spend and that's the reason why uh, taxes are increasing because they cannot follow a budget to save their lives. Thank you.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
One thing to add to that. Um, it's a shame when we make bills and we don't pay our bills. If you look at those beautiful signs down simply, we still owe $65,000, 65,700 as of today's date. These people are looking for their money. Their money. We can't continue to do reckless spending when we already owe so many vendors. It's sad that we constantly keep making bills on top of bills that we are not paying. The email is here. So again, when you say it's a lie, it's fake news, it's right here in black and white. I spoke to them Friday. They want their money.
Take hurt people out. That's called targeting. And I get it because you guys want to control the narrative of everything, but you the one creating all the chaos and all the misunderstanding. Cause once again, I've stated before, if you really wanted answers, you would, you would call. I always say call me. Now y'all call me. And you would come and sit down and talk about whatever you feel you don't like, don't understand, but you guys don't do that. It's all about a show for everybody now. And that's what's so sad. So then when we get out here, we gotta try to lie to the public about whatever's going on. Just like how y'all talking about the firemen and they came up. Of course, you know, I'mma get to the bottom of whatever it is. I'mma do a whole video about it. Because just cause somebody, just cause somebody say something, don't make it true. Don't make it factual till you fact check it. How you know it's true? And then you guys just lying on everybody's name about people taking things. No one's taking anything. For what? For what? So all I'm saying to y'all is like, come on, man. Get some clarity to the why. And want to help community. You guys sat in this board for four years and I see y'all do nothing, nothing at all. But keep up chaos and mess and confusion. That's it. You, the residents not slow. They see this. And all I'm saying to y'all is like, talk before you get to the board meeting. Have conversations about something that on the agenda before you get to the board meeting. So everybody will be prepared. Because when y'all ask the question halftime, they don't have it in front of them. But y'all job is to try to make people look like they doing something that they're not. Then when they give you the answer, you don't come back and clear it up. Just like the news don't, when they make a mistake, they just leave a mistake out there about whatever they said about a person. It's the same thing, but we can do better if we want better. But y'all don't want better. Y'all want to keep confusion up and chaos. And I'm tired of it. Y'all gotta want to show the public that we can work together. We, us, at a board meeting. Think about it. We only see each other once, once, once a month. That's it. Once a month we see y'all. Other, I don't see y'all at the grocery store. I don't see y'all at the gas station. Hold on, I'm not done. I don't see y'all nowhere in the city that you.
Not a back and forth.
Close to living.
It's not a back and forth.
Wow.
Don't. So all I'm saying to you guys is y'all gotta really, really want more than just creating a whole negative narrative every single time it's a board meeting. And that's why I normally don't give this any attention or time at this moment. I go let y'all vote because you guys already got your mind made up. It's my open meeting, Zach, how y'all voting sign. That means y'all met, talked about it, came up with a plan, came here, y'all all vote together. No matter what we say, even if we answer the question, you still vote against whatever we gave you the answer to. So it can't just be you're right, can't just be y'all right and we wrong. It don't work that way. We give you the facts, we give you the truth and you guys still keep the turmoil going. We gotta say enough is enough. We gotta move forward. And I get it, it's election time. Everybody got a voice. Everybody want to say something. When y'all could have been doing more work together, us together, before we got to this point. Cause in two months, everybody up, right? Everybody up. And that's all it's about. It's all about attention. It's all about clickbait. It's all about, look at me, look what we doing. That's it. When y'all ain't really been doing nothing and then y'all, y'all fight.
Mayor.
Y'all go around the fact that you guys raised taxes. No matter how y'all try to sugarcoat that, the board raised your taxes. I don't care what they say. They raised your taxes. But yeah, they want to say stuff about a budget. When we give you a budget, you don't pass it. When we give you a budget and we go get the money and bring it back, grant money. The lawyer had to tell y'all to put the grant money back in the budget. We wouldn't even be able to receive the money. But I don't see nobody else bringing funds into our community but me, the mayor.
That's your job.
But yeah, oh, it's my job. Okay. It's my job to get the money. But yeah, y'all want to tell me what to do. It don't work like.
That's our job.
I ran to lead. I didn't run to follow y'all. I don't follow people that ain't got no vision and nowhere to go. And I don't sit at tables where we do all this look catting and talking about each other. I don't do that, but y'all do.
And every time I've said this before, it don't never really go bad till we get to finance. Why is the finance person not here? Why is the person that cut the checks not here? Why isn't the CPA's office not here? That would solve a lot of things since you talking about nobody calls you, nobody called Keith or whatever. You just said it out your mouth. We meet once a month. I mean, as much money as all these people, we just approved $43,000 for the CPA. The, uh, other person that's doing payroll stuff, make almost $90,000. They can't afford one meeting a month to come and give us an explanation? And then you steady saying, yes, you went and got the money. I done asked for, I don't know how many months. Where is it?
Next on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can go on to the next meeting? Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second. The answers, you're not gonna get anything new with all the cat calls. So this meeting is our trustees meeting. Can we give them the respect? Cause you don't care about that other bullshit anyway. She sits here and tells us what her job is and what their job is, but she disregards their job. She won't let them do it. So don't quote a lot of me when it works for you. Quote a lot of me when it works for everybody.
So, um, I was a little upset and frazzled earlier. I'm just gonna be very specific. First of all, I want to give, uh, kudos to your staff. Everybody finally seemed to have gained a mind of their own for the most part. And the respect that's given is the respect that's reciprocated. We could have been here a long time ago. Um, definitely shocked and proud to see brother Stan Brown because I was ashamed to be a Brown, but it seems like you finally catching up. And, um, literally I think that what the people are asking for is not unreasonable. And it is really interesting to see somebody sitting in the people's business, speaking about not being prepared to answer questions of an elected official. And to think that they can do that with an attitude or sass or zestiness is a little disrespectful. And so I would encourage, uh, Mr. Freeman to make sure that the next time you come, you do like Kiana and just bring all your damn files. And then the last thing that I'm gonna say is I did notice that my good fellow advocate Andrew Holmes is in the building. And that's why literally I wish that I would have looked up before I read the statement because as it relates to you, you're the reason that I'm here. And you're the reason that everybody is going through what they're going through as it relates to an advocate because you're supposed to be one. But you've been accused of something that's very shameful. And the least you could have done is given us a very basic and comprehensive statement, literally giving sympathy and understanding to a vic, a survivor, be it that you felt that it was true or not, and you could have at least declared your innocence, which noted you haven't done. And so I'm simply asking you right now because me sitting here looking at your face, I'm utterly disgusted. Because how dare you take your ass back outside and stand with any family when there's a woman with a child that's waiting on a responsive, a response from you. Literally as an elected official and as an advocate about what you did, was it consensual, was it not? Did you rape that woman? Did you put something in her drink and then you gonna answer and you gonna answer me.
Out of order, you out of order, you out of order. Hey.
Shut the fuck up.
Where about yourself?
Let's go, let's go, we gotta go.